Welcome to the Olentangie Board of Education Regular Meeting. Tonight is Thursday, February 8th. We're in the Berlin Room at the Olentangie Administrative Offices. Mrs. Hatfield, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bartz?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Before we do that, I do have to, the Item B presentation of the Auditor State Award, we got a call just about a half hour ago that the representative from the Auditor State's office is having car trouble and will not be able to attend tonight, so we're gonna strike that.
Okay.
So we'll present the agenda as amended.
May I have?
I still so moved.
And I still second.
Okay, alright. Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll. Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
The motion's adopted. So tonight, we have one presentation. Our first, we'd like to welcome Ashley Wagner, Tasha Corwin, Andrea Shirok, and Megan Pennell from Arrowhead Elementary. They will be presenting on how literacy is meaningful through the four Cs. Please come on up.
First, we've got a little video for you to watch, so it'll be, I think, on that screen and on this one, so can't move. There you go.
It was the 2015-2016 school year, and I was really discouraged with my reading instruction. I was disappointed in myself because I wasn't getting through to my kids in the way that I had hoped. They were not at all engaged in reading, which I believe is the best skill you can develop. They were not loving to read. That same year, we, as a district, adopted the Lucy Cockens Units of Study and Teaching Writing, and I was thrilled with the progress that I was seeing in my students. I just happened to find a Lucy Cockens Unit of Study and Teaching Reading in a cabinet in another classroom. And with the encouragement from Mrs. Shirok, our ELL Intervention Specialist, who's five kids I had in my class at the time, and who decided graciously to co-teach reading with me, I decided to use the units of study as my guide for teaching reading. It was the best decision that I ever made as a teacher, and I've had the best results that I will remember forever, but more importantly, my students will remember forever. As any good thing takes lots of time and effort to perfect, so does Lucy Cockens Units of Studies. It takes tons of time to read and prepare to make the message come through as your own. The night before I was to teach my first Lucy Cockens reading lesson, after lots of prep, I did really have a dream. And it was, in the dream, Mrs. Shirok and I had decided that we were gonna be Hans and Franz from the old-school Saturday Night Live skits. And we told the kids in my dream that we were there to pump you up. So when I got to school the next day, I told Mrs. Shirok about my dream, and she, her response to that was, "Let's do it." So that was when summarize and synthesize were made, and we both came bounding into my classroom with our muscles out and our stop signs on. And from that point on, my reading instruction has never been the same. I now had that element of engagement, rich thought-based lessons, and an abundance of excellent books recommended by Lucy Cockens and purchased by our Arrowhead PTO. There was just one problem that I approached Bridget McMillan about. For every one of my lessons that I had spent countless hours preparing, I'd turn around and literally half my class was gone for different services, IEP services, title services, and literacy support services. And this was heartbreaking to me because I felt I was finally reaching, or teaching kids to love reading and seeing their true engagement with the subject. And again, with Mrs. Shirok's encouragement, I pushed for a change in how those services were given, and that's when true co-teaching began.
So one of the most incredible things about being in Olentangie is the absolute amazing educators who are a part of this district, and certainly no one knows that better than you. But even in a full district, a district full of amazing teachers, and even if you get them all in the same room, it's just not enough. So even once we coordinated the services so that ELL services were happening at the same time as literacy support and as the intervention specialist, it still wasn't as engaging. We weren't completely satisfied. And so what we wanted to do was continue to push the envelope. We wanted to find a way to continue to improve not only our instructional model, but our intervention model as well. We happened to have the incredible opportunity to go to a co-teaching conference through pupil services, and it was at this co-teaching conference that we realized that our instruction could be so much more than we had ever even imagined. While at the conference, we heard about a variety of co-teaching methods, but there were two that really resonated with us, and we felt like this is what our instruction's missing. One of those is called parallel teaching. And so if you would walk into Mrs. Corwin or Mrs. Wagner's room on a parallel teaching day, what you would see is two, three, however many teachers are in the room, and they've divided the entire class into small groups. They're delivering the exact same mini lesson at the exact same time, but to so many fewer students. And so what we've done is we've taken down the student-teacher ratio, we've taken away extraneous distractors, we've provided all students an opportunity to engage meaningfully in discussion and the lessons. And what we were amazed to see is that participation went through the roof. ELL children are not typically frequent participators in lessons. Obviously, it's very, very overwhelming to know that you don't have the words to communicate your really smart thinking, but what we saw in that classroom that first year is that every one of my five students, who was limited in English proficiency, was participating as much, or sometimes more, than their native English-speaking peers. And that progress continued when we went to fifth grade and continued this model. Another model, another piece of the co-teaching model that we really, really liked was something called Stations during our planning, which we'll hear more about shortly. We would all come together and review our data and our anecdotal notes, and what we would see is that there were certain kids that needed certain help with skills. So maybe it was summarize and synthesize, or maybe it was main idea. Maybe it was how to put main idea into fifth-grade words. It's not just all about elephants. It's how elephants survive. It's how elephants avoid poachers. And so what we would do is work in small groups with kids, and then each kid in that classroom got what they needed. It wasn't about being in Mrs. Shirok's group, or Mrs. Pennell's group, or only being with your fifth-grade classroom teachers. What we saw suddenly is that every kid took ownership of their learning. Every kid was finding themselves in a place where they got exactly what they needed, and they started to be motivated by that and saw it as an opportunity for them to continue their learning.
Have you ever been in a presentation where sometimes you're wondering how something's gonna fit together? Maybe they come in with costumes, or you're just wondering, "How's this all gonna tie in?" Our kids do the exact same things when they walk through our classroom doors, with a costume or Lego table, whatever we have out. Whether we're in football helmets, as you saw, for tough questions, or whether we're in cap and gowns for Words of the Wiser, our kids' brains start turning, and they start to wonder, "What does this have to do with reading and writing? And how is it gonna all fit together?" And so much so, that they even read our ICAN statements that we were forced to run the board, but now we're excited about because they're figuring it out! And it's making our learning meaningful. Research says that if you have a visual, if you make your learning meaningful, they'll remember it. So yeah, some days we look crazy. Some days we wear costumes. Some days we rap a little bit. Some days we even make silly book trailer videos. But every day, we try our hardest for those kids that when they walk through our door, they're excited about learning, and they're excited about what we're gonna be teaching, that they can apply it to their future.
And last but not least, collaboration. I remember the moment like it was yesterday. Two years ago, at the end of the school year, I was approached about the possibility of changing our intervention service delivery model to provide more inclusion opportunities for students within the regular classroom setting. And as a result, several stakeholders met and prepared class lists for the following school year in which students were clustered to make this amazing opportunity happen. I was a little hesitant and suspicious at first as to how we were going to make everything work and still meet the needs and services of all of our students. Little did I know, however, that I was in for one of the most life-changing teaching experiences ever. Mrs. Corwin and Mrs. Wagner expressed at the beginning of the new school year that they would like to try an open-classroom team-teaching approach with other support service staff in order to teach reading and writing lessons within the Lucy Cockens framework. Every Friday at 8:00 a.m., we meet with our computers, our planners, our Lucy Cockens materials, and a love for teaching our students to be the best that they can be. Mrs. Corwin and Mrs. Wagner constructed a shared Google Doc folder for all of us to access the common thread of lessons. And then as a team, we each individually review the lessons and provide our own personal flair during the actual delivery of the lesson to students. The most amazing part of this opportunity to collaborate with these wonderful women and many more is that all of our students made incredible gains.
Promised I wouldn't get emotional.
Yeah, that's part of it.
And developed such a passion and love for reading and writing. In fact, our fifth-grade math, science, and social studies teachers remarked several times throughout the course of the school year how much the quality of writing had improved because of these women here. And our at-risk students, our students with IEPs and 504s, were also making such significant growth and progress that I was completely hooked on this newfound approach for teaching reading and writing. We appreciate the time that you let us come and take, and for all of our supporters, we appreciate you coming, but thank you guys.
Well, don't think you're gonna go away.
We get to ask questions. This is too exciting to just let dry. I'm gonna ask you some questions. Anyone? I have some, but, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so are you doing this all grades or lower grades? What grades are?
Ashley and I teach fifth grade. It started as fourth grade, so there's variations of it throughout.
We're the fifth grade that does it with open classroom. Yeah, we're the only grade that does it.
Is there jealousy, because you are all having such great results? Maybe it'll spread?
No, really, all of our instruction is done really well, so I don't think there's jealousy, except for when we have Mrs. Shirok.
More and more people are implementing the Lucy Cockens framework, however, using the reading and writing materials, and they've seen tremendous growth as well across the board. And it just, the ability to reach kids' varying needs. We had, last year, we've clustered a little bit different this year, but last year we had our gifted, our intervention, we had literacy support and title. At one point, we counted eight adults in the classroom at one point, so it allowed for more individualized instruction, and that wouldn't have been possible had we not clustered how we did and had we not all collaborated as well.
So are you all reading the same book and just teaching it, you know, with your ELL students? You would have to teach a different, are you reading different books at the same time?
No, that's a great question. And so it depends on what skill we're teaching. We're all teaching the exact same mini lessons, so when I talked about parallel teaching, if you walk in, you are seeing the exact same mini lesson. So part of that is when we would come together on Friday mornings, I would come with my lens as an ELL specialist, Megan would have her lens as an IAS. These two ladies are driving the curriculum. It's fifth grade, we don't have time to sit, we've gotta really get this going. And then together, we would put in place scaffolds that just naturally lived in the lesson. We would structurally plan for the learners in front of us. And in doing that, we were able to maximize everyone's learning. What we saw then is that we had native English-speaking kids who were taking part in language scaffolds that traditionally only my students would have had. You know, we also planned with our gifted intervention specialists, we were enriching all of their thinking just simply through that instructional planning piece. Now, once we broke into stations or small groups, that's where we would get the instructional level text in their hands so that we could grow the gap closer.
So this is your second year of piloting this?
No, two and a half.
Two and a half.
We started in February of 2016.
So we start off, we collaborate every Friday, and we figure everything out. And then in the morning group, we have students with IEPs and 504s, and in the afternoon, we have a couple of 504s that are gifted, and our intervention specialist also works with the students. So we all have to kind of, we all have to come together and determine the objectives and everything that we wanna hit home with our students. And then also, we have students right now reading from anywhere from a beginning of second-grade reading level all the way up to seventh, eighth grade. And so our lessons start off where we're using mentor texts through the Lucy Cockens framework. We're delivering the lesson, we're doing practice, we're doing modeling. We send them out, they either do partner work, or they do independent work. And then, because I do have some students with pull-out intervention services, I'm also meeting those minutes after we have provided the mini lesson and done partner practice. So it's a really nice, fluid machine.
Just a couple of quick questions. So where's Lucy been hiding? I mean, you know, you say you came across it. Where's this been inside of the district? Has anyone not used it? Has it been there? Is it not?
At that point, it was just, it was the writing that had been adopted by the district, the reading.
But the reading portion was not.
Right.
So is it repeatable? Can you use this as a best practice and expand this? And do you have plans for that? And have you worked with whoever's striking the bus right now? Biz or Anthony or someone? Lucy McMurray's hiding in here somewhere. Mrs. McMurray.
I'm behind the public.
That's all we need to know, is the focus is on Mrs. McMurray. And then one last thing, as you mentioned, your English second language kids. So is it closing the gap for those kids faster, or is it more efficient? Because as the soon-to-be father-in-law of a newly-excited English-as-a-second-language master's teacher in New York's in the Bronx, she is struggling, but that's high school, so the ship is way down the channel. So I guess the question is, are you gonna be able to close that gap and help those kids faster?
Over time, the gap will close. So what research suggests is that it takes seven to 10 years to achieve native language proficiency, and that includes factors such as literacy skills in your L1 or native language, prior schooling experience in your native language, home support. And so those are all really great things, but guess what? Most of the students we have at Arrowhead are called Generation 1.5, and what that means is their parents are native Spanish speakers, native Romanian speakers, whatever the home language is, but those children are born near the United States, they're American, and they grow up hearing English on TV, and hearing English at the park, and they speak some English, but they aren't proficient in their English speaking. So what we do is work to close the gap. Now currently, I am very sad to say that I'm actually in fifth grade with these ladies right now because we have such a great, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wagner. We have such a great program, K through 3, 4, 5, all of our early interventions, and all the parent support, and ELLs can get great from our reading classes. So we had evidence through our observations. I observed more complex sentence structures, I observed participation, we would do tallies. One of my students who was also on an IEP would literally dominate the conversation in the fourth and fifth-grade classrooms, in book clubs, to the point that we would have to say, "Okay, I just love your enthusiasm, and I love your work." And that young man, he waited for years and years and years to have his voice thrown. He waited for years and years and years to have a text in his hand that was meaningful and made school exciting for him, and he had his moment. So we had to harness the moment and use it appropriately so other children were able to talk. We observed huge gains in A's, we observed huge gains in that chart possession system, DAS, and overall increased performance, so we were very pleased. Now, that was unique, and certainly there is a jump to middle school. And so long-term, can I give you hard numbers? No. But what I can tell you, I've observed in the two years that we had that group for fourth grade and then it was a partial leap to fifth grade, is their gains were astronomical, and most of those kids actually exited in fifth grade. So that group of seven that went into fifth grade, all the three exited before the end of fifth grade.
Does the core of the course allow it to plug and play beyond elementary?
I would say yes.
Into middle and high school?
I'm sorry. So I'm an intervention specialist, and I work with four or five, but we're getting ready to transition, and Arrowhead has the unique privilege of going to three young middle schools next year.
Sure.
So I've already met with Burke Scher, but Shanahan.
I like the way you say that.
I've been correct, and don't worry. And I'm getting ready to meet with Shanahan, but in the past couple of years, we've actually heard from the middle school teachers that Arrowhead kids are different, that their level of learning and reading and writing is just amazing. And I would attribute a lot of that to our practices that we've implemented through the Lucy Cockens framework. It is really, really good material. And the kids, I just have goosebumps right now, the kids develop this lifelong love for reading and writing that can't even be explained. I mean, we have kids that never went to read or read.
It's okay. Passion is encouraged here.
And now they're producing amazing, amazing masterpieces.
And I do think that there is a piece where, you know, Lucy Cockens wrote this incredible program, and really, it's more of a framework, but she's not the teacher in front of the kids. And so there is that piece that makes our Friday morning planning so incredibly important because that's where we sit as the grown-ups who are trying and know these kids better than anyone else and say, "I know what Lucy Cockens says you need right now, but I'm the grown-up in charge of you." And I also know we need to take a couple steps back before we can get to where she wants you to be. But we're gonna take some pieces, we're gonna take some language frames, and we're gonna take the end hole, and we're gonna scaffold it a little bit to, over time, get you where you need to be. But there is this piece, I mean, we did signposts. We stopped and saw the signposts, like the old lady pictures and the football helmets, and those are all things, because what we wanna do is we wanna grow these little people as people. We want them to love reading and see this as something that lives outside of our classrooms. And we had kids literally asking to come in for indoor recess to start their book club. They wanted to go to the white group. Well, I was gonna say, boys who did not.
Boys?
Originally. And they were disappointed on days we didn't have the book club, or we would say, "No, I'm sorry, you need to go out and play. It's sunny and beautiful, we want you to go out and enjoy it."
Well, that's awesome, because it's a tool, like any other tool, and it doesn't understand demographics and kids and neighborhoods, so kudos to you for adapting it. I mean, outstanding.
Wonderful. I think I have a better understanding, just listening to the informal conversation here, but I was intrigued, which you started off about encouraging children to want to read and to learn, to love, to read. And then as I saw on the bottom of the one slide, a reference to the different groups, but it included gifted. And I thought, well, that was interesting. With that group of children, you're going through this process of encouraging them to read. I was wondering if the language, second language, was part of that, or, I thought that was interesting.
That was just a well-balanced approach to the kids in front of us, and certainly, if you would come to our gifted intervention specialist, Erica Moon, who I have the honor of sharing her with, so I feel like I could have a great conversation with her. She would say to you that being gifted doesn't mean you're necessarily interested in school, it doesn't mean you're necessarily supposed to be able to do the work, you know? And so we need to understand collectively, as the grown-ups in charge of these kids, that being gifted means we have needs too. They have social, emotional needs. They have, there are so many needs. And so sometimes, in that planning piece, if we're going into book clubs and we had a group of children who might be gifted, and maybe they didn't, they made fun of the conversation with others, then we would prompt those kids and say, "Okay, some things you can say to someone else is. I picked out this part of the book because, what do you think to engage that other person? Sentence strengths." Because what oftentimes would happen is they would have a beautiful, complex text, and a grown idea that would have all this evidence, and then they would be done, they would come here and give you the answers. So even those gifted kids needed different kinds of support, and even those gifted kids were using language strengths that were planted in their English language. And so all kids got to take advantage of all scaffolds in our classrooms, so that was that ownership piece, where they got to say, "This is what I need to do my best. I have a clear set goal, I know what I need, but what I'm going to do now is I'm gonna take this that my teacher showed me, and this that I saw in small group, and then I'm going to try to use it." And it needed some prompting, and sometimes it needed some reminders, and my goodness, we had more A for charts than you could even imagine.
All over, fire.
All over.
All over.
We tried to take them out, but we needed to account that every student that's walked in our classroom, whether they were gifted, ELL, on an IEP, not that, or going through the war, so I'm just having a hard time getting attention to you because I built the world scratch. We give every single one of those kids something to hang on to in that lesson, and I do believe that that was a key piece of a success that we saw collectively from the kids.
Great collaboration. Outstanding.
Yeah, anybody else? Because I have one last comment from a parent of a child with, you know, a language disability that you can't even measure this, but your ability to include all children, will it affect their self-esteem? That's something that is priceless. It's really hard to get back when you've lost it, and you should sleep very well at night. It's a great presentation.
That was outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. Okay, oh, the board's president's report.
That's what I'm doing, yeah.
Okay, now we're to the board president's report. Oh, if you, please know that you don't have to stay, we will excuse you. But thank you for coming. I'll let you exit.
I was gonna say nice things about it, but my superintendent.
Don't miss it.
Too late.
Don't miss it.
Bye.
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 He's cute, can you say?
Lots going on over at Arrowhead. Wow.
Always, always and everywhere.
For the board president's report, I wanted to commend our district for all its hard work because our One Community Conference had its highest participation ever. I heard over 500 people had registered. A special thanks to Jaclyn Powers and Heather Cole, because I know they did a lot of the organization behind that, and a lot had to come together to make that happen. And I'm very, very proud that our district has cultivated that opportunity for people to participate in. Next, I'm sure Mr. Rafe will cover this too, our next big event will be the Spirit of Olentangie, and hopefully we'll all be there, right?
Yep.
Unfortunately, I was not there. I was at the board leadership class at OSBA, staring at the clock, thinking I'm missing the kids speaking, and very disappointed that I wasn't able to do that. But I learned a few things, and I kinda wanted to take this opportunity to share with the public that there is so much that goes on before we actually sit down here. Because as I took my class, you know, things go here because we have a collaborative board, we're well-informed, and a lot of other members, they had a lot of problems that we are fortunate enough to not have. But one of the things I think the public should know is, for transparency's sake, that the president and vice president meet a week ahead of time to review the agenda, we know everything that's on it, we have the opportunity to ask questions, and then after that meeting, our agenda goes out to the entire board, and they have the opportunity to ask Mr. Rafe or call myself or Mr. O'Brien to clarify things so that when we walk in here, we really know, and we reviewed our documents. And that is why sometimes it goes so easily. So I have to, after seeing what other districts go through, I have to commend our own for how well we do that. And I think that's all I have for the, oh, and Mrs. Hatfield feels a lot of bond, financial questions, translates it to us, so thank you for that. I think that's about it. What's next for the superintendent's report?
Good evening, all. It was a great presentation. We're very, just amazed at the energy those four ladies have. Can only imagine what they're like in the, early in the day. Here it is, late, and they're going to a talent show. You know, and that's an interesting, you know, their model of instruction, their practices shows what kind of time and effort and energy they really put into it. And it is utilizing the resources that we've assigned to deliver that model. So they've created a model that they believe works more efficiently and isn't requiring us to put in additional resources. So it's utilizing their talents in just a different way. And it certainly is worthy of discussion, of replication, if we get those, get better results with that type of model. So I wanna commend them for their effort. So moving on to our, echo what Mrs. Patrick talked about, our Fourth Annual One Community Conference. It was, we had over 500 people register. William White was a keynote speaker, did a great job. But really, the most powerful presentations are the ones where our students participate and share their experiences, and they were all, those are usually the highest-attended individual sessions, and I just see people walking out of those sessions and are just amazed at what our kids have to share. So. So, Wednesday of this week, unfortunately, we had a snow day, so we did not get to conduct our signing ceremonies. This is National Auditor of Intent Signing Day for all other sports except for Division One football, although we had an early signing period in the fall also where we recognize students. So here's our list of National Athletic Signing Day students from, four students from Olentangie High School, three, six, seven students from Liberty High School, I'll highlight Olivia, she's not here, you'll be seeing Olivia Sensky attending board meetings from time to time, she's a mentorship student who is working in our communications department, so she's already doing a great job. And then eight students from Orange High School. And congratulations to all of them and their families for their accomplishments, so wish them the best of luck in the future. Next up, District Y, I highly encourage parents to, parent program teams, public forum, Generation RX. The presenter is an Olentangie High School graduate, Tara Pirella, she works here in the area for Kroger, it's a program Kroger is offering to school districts about safe medication practices for life. So just again, raising the level, especially given the state of the opioid crisis in Ohio, I think this is certainly worth putting in front of our parents. Quick review of our agenda items, I will, the first three up there are all Mrs. Hatfield's items, and I'm sure she's going to cover those in her report, so I will pass on talking much about them, I don't want to be redundant. Big purchase, the first round of loose furnishings, so you have two big purchases for Berlin High School. Those are in line with what we had projected, as you know, when we set the budget for Berlin, when we did the bond, we took what the cost of the furnishings were for Orange High School and applied a inflationary number to them. We're finding some things have gone up more in inflation and other things have not gone up as much, so there is some shifting of money in the funds as we have them defined, but these two big purchase items for the, most of the desks and the chairs and teacher desks and file cabinets and all that stuff that goes into school are in line with what we anticipated, so we were happy with that. Couple other important dates coming up, OEF Spirit of Community Night, as Mrs. Hatfield, I'm sorry, Mrs. Patrick mentioned, and then our next board of, Mr. O'Brien and I don't have any side bets on this Community Night, so, not like the golf outing, so, we don't let the, we're not doing any casino night this year, so.
There's no casino night?
No, we're, they're doing a different, different, different fun theme, I'm not positive what it is. Always look to somebody. And then our next Board of Education meeting, Thursday, March 1st, happens fast. And then finally, as you all know, we did have a tragic accident, Fred Buckner was a bus driver here in the district since 2014, got into a car accident, and then on his way being transported to the hospital, passed away from other complications. Fred's been with us since 2014, he is actually the uncle of Josh McDaniel, the principal of Shanahan Middle School, so Josh and his family are struggling with this one. I did attend his services today, and huge crowd, because by all accounts, a great, great guy. I didn't include this as part of my report, but as you're aware, we did have a student pass away unexpectedly, a Liberty High School freshman, so we're now doing our best to support all the students and staff at Liberty and Liberty Middle and all throughout the district. So we wish that family, family the best, so, sad day. With that, I'll take any questions.
Just point out one thing on the Community Night, they are having casino games.
Oh, they are?
The issue was, was the purse bingo, which was hugely.
Oh, wow.
No purse bingo? No purse bingo bingo?
Okay, let them talk.
It's going to go through, yes, it's going to go through a raffle system for the purses instead of bingo because the state of Ohio said it's illegal gambling.
Really?
Yep. So unless we would do it in a building that we own, we're not going to do that, so they're going to change the purse bingo to first purse.
I know. I know that I'm going to sleep, I'm going to sleep more soundly because of that.
I think they don't like all us women congregating together, that's the problem.
Well, Pat said she wasn't going without, and I said, no, 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 no.
Well, we have gotten a lot of negative feedback because Mrs. Feasor consistently wins.
What?
Yeah, she's won multiple times.
She abstains.
They're just changing how they're going to do it.
It's fine, it's fine.
So it's still going to happen.
Played bingo all my life, had a lot of practice.
Say you should be good at it.
I know, I just left. I left before a game.
Well, maybe Mrs. Hatfield will sit around for questions. Go ahead with your report.
He's got a lock?
Yes, and I did play purse bingo last time, but no, I did not land. It was a lot of fun, though.
It was, it is fun.
So I apologize, the first presentation item up there is the Auditor of State Awards with Distinction. Of course, Mr. Rafe shared that our representative from the Auditor of State's office was not able to attend tonight, so I'll save my comments for when we get that rescheduled. I will say, though, that it is, you know, it is a great honor, and, you know, I'm looking forward to having our staff come in and be a part of that presentation because they work hard with us every day to make sure that the district is able to achieve that award each year. So general action items that are on the agenda tonight are just appropriation adjustments, donations, and meeting minutes, those are pretty regular items that hit the agenda. With that, I will say that our amended appropriations are minor budget adjustments, nothing that is out of the ordinary there. For donations, we would like to thank the Olentangie community for their continued support in both monetary and in-kind donations of their time and so forth. Tonight, we'll recognize Indian Springs PTO donation for funding software licensing, physical education equipment, and document cameras totaling over $3,400. Mr. Browning's donation for the Work Study Club at Liberty High School of $500, and Liberty Athletic Boosters donation for improvement to the Liberty High School wrestling room lighting for over $1,800. We are always appreciative of all the support our community gives, and they continue to give year over year, so we're very grateful for that. The meeting minutes that are on the agenda are for the January 11th organizational and business meeting, and are submitted for approval as standard practice. So action items continued, we have our alternative tax budget. The alternative tax budget is required to be submitted to Delaware County Auditor's Office no later than March 1st every fiscal year. This information is used by the Budget Commission to set tax rates and issue official certificates of estimated resources, which is a requirement of various sections of the Ohio Revised Code. So what we do is put together what we anticipate we will collect and spend for the next fiscal year, and they use that information as they move into that tax season, or tax year, excuse me. The amounts and tax rates by Delaware County Auditor, this again is another item that comes to us year over year. The letter that is before you is for Tax Year 2017, which we collect in 2018, and we've had a change in our effective millage rate. So the change in the rate was 58.9, down to 53.84 for Tax Year 2017, which causes that change in valuation for $100,000 of residential real estate from 183385 to 167615. So what that means for our residents is that their tax per $100,000 valuation went down.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, let me repeat that, I know that's great news to share. So for our residential taxpayers, the cost per $100,000 valuation went down. Last year for Tax Year 2016, which we collected in 17, was 183385, it's going down to 167615 for Tax Year 2017, which is collected beginning in January of this year. And so we had a couple of things that factored into that. Of course, one of them being the valuation, 2017 was a reappraisal year in Delaware County, and that reappraisal actually saw an average of over 11 and 1/2 percent. We had budgeted in the forecast around 10 percent, thinking that we wouldn't quite see as much growth as Delaware County had anticipated, but it got pretty close to that 12 percent mark. The other item that impacts the collection rate is part of our bond refunding. So on our debt millage, we saw a decrease, a larger decrease there, and that was primarily driven by not only the valuations, but also the fact that we continue to look at refunding mechanisms and continue to look at our debt on, our debt schedule, and take the opportunity to refund our bonds so that we can get lower interest rates and lower debt costs for the district. So those two pieces work together to help the bond effective millage rate go down.
What was, you said, what was the effective rate now?
So our current effective millage rate will be 53.84.
Prior to our 2016 levy, the effective rate at that time was around 52.6, so it's almost rolled back to the pre-levy.
So that's a good thing, even with that large issuance, we were able to refund and use those opportunities to take the cost of the debt down and make it better for our taxpayers. So we're very excited to be able to report that. And to speak to that more, we have another bond refunding resolution that's on the agenda for approval tonight. And this refunding relates to our 2010 Build America Bonds, or BABS Bonds. Those bonds were, came about from the government during the recession, they were trying to spark the market and get people to be able to issue debt and help local governments be able to issue debt and stay active within the market. And so they issued a subsidy payment for those types of bonds. You could get a 35 percent of your interest payment back and a subsidy payment on those bonds. What's happening with the tax reform is that they're continuing to cut the subsidy reimbursement. So for 2018, we're seeing a 6.6 percent reduction in that subsidy payment. And so in looking at those bonds and the call dates and the call features that are on there, it makes sense for us to take a look at refunding them and have them be general obligation bonds, which means that we'll protect any further reduction or loss on that federal subsidy payment. Right now, the market, I'm sure you guys have seen information or news that the interest rates are starting to climb. So we are looking at the, God bless you, the interest rates, right now, at the current rate structure, we are at about a 3.8 percent net present value savings in addition to protecting the loss or reduction of the subsidy payments. That 3.8 percent might decrease depending on markets and if that interest rate continues to climb. So we'll continue to watch that, but I think even with that net present value savings being smaller, we're still in good shape to protect ourselves against further loss on that subsidy payment.
Did we extend, extend maturity?
I'm sorry?
Did we end up extending the maturity of that debt?
Would we, would we end up extending the maturity of the debt?
Yeah. So say we're five years into a 30-year issue, do we end up extending maturity?
It would still be a 30-year maturity, yes, yes.
Because is it counted as a reissuance, like a taking out a new bond?
Right, that was my question.
That's how it's counted. You know, instead of saying, we're going to refund it, and now we're at 25 years, we're refunding it, but you're staying at 30 years, so it's kind of like taking out a whole new bond. But, but, excuse me, you're saving because you're losing that government subsidy.
Correct. So if we would lose the subsidy payment altogether over the life of the bond, it would be about $6.5 million that we would not get back to offset the cost of the interest. So even as a break, even if we're just protecting that, we're still $6.5 million ahead if it would go away. So we're hoping to move rather quickly to take advantage of the market before the rates continue to rise, to also get that net present value savings in addition to protecting that subsidy loss.
The subsidy's already been reduced from 35 to 6.
Yeah, it keeps, it keeps, it's been reducing for several years.
Bias.
Right. And the reason why these particular, this particular set was not refunded in 2013 when the 2009 bond, BABS bonds were refunded, that's when they really started, you know, we were already receiving cuts to that subsidy payment, is just simply a matter of the call features within those issuances. So we couldn't get to the 2010 bonds until this year to be within that 90-day window.
That's when we had the angry investor call. By the way, I'm a feature that you can't criticize the entity for exercising the right of the law.
Yeah. Are there further questions about the bond? And last but not least, we have been discussing with our Finance and Audit Committee what we can do to better report or be more transparent with our permanent improvement and bond expenditures. Those funds have been in the news and media as of late for other districts, and concerns have been expressed about, well, where do we get this information? How do we know what's being done or what's being spent out of those funds? So we talked about not only the presentations that Mr. Gordon provides, he provides us with, I would say almost quarterly, between the permanent improvement and the bond expenditures, where we are, what we've spent to date, are we on budget, are we on task, and so forth, which is great information. In terms of where we can see those regular expenditures, we report those expenditures on a monthly basis. So each time we bring a financial packet to the board for approval, those expenditures are within there, it's just a matter of finding it within all the other information that's included. So I provided the board with handouts that start with a copy of the index for the monthly financials, and we just highlighted three reports that we want, that I want to discuss really high level to point out where that information is. So we're going to start with our fund balances. And these reports, or the monthly financial reports, of course, are board-approved each month, so they are out on the website, they are available for the public to see at any time, and they also come back through when we approve the minutes. So it's not only as an exhibit when we bring it to the agenda in the first place, but it's also embedded in the minutes themselves. So I just wanted to point that out to the community if they're trying to find what we're discussing. In the fund balances report, which is the first report that we're going to look at, we highlighted the OO3 Fund and the OO4 Fund. So one of the topics that we discussed in our meeting was putting in more descriptions in this page so that we will describe what each fund is, so beginning with our January financial statements, you'll see that the OO1 Fund is general fund, and we'll label those out so it's a little more clear. But your OO3 Fund is your permanent improvement fund. So when we have our one mil permanent improvement levy on the ballot, when folks are trying to figure out where is that posted and how do I see that, it's under this OO3 Fund. And then OO4 is our bond fund, so that's where the building and the construction is coming from the high school, and from the additional expenditures that we had a part of that package, excuse me, which include the buses and some of the roofs and larger repairs that we had set aside. So in that report, it gives us the beginning balance for the month, fiscal year, excuse me, for the year, the fiscal year-to-date receipts, fiscal year-to-date expenditures in total, and where the fund balance currently stands at the end of the month. The next report that we look at is the financial report by Fund and Special Cost Center, which is this page. And what this report shows on a regular basis is it actually shows the detailed accounts that go into those totals. For example, the OO3 Fund actually has one, two, three accounts, one being a permanent improvement that's labeled 9,000, so our residual bond monies that we moved into permanent improvement. We also have the permanent improvement levy that you can see the details on, as well as the House Bill 264 project. So each month, you can see in those three categories, again, the receipts, the expenditures, and where the balance is on the account. expenditures, and where the balance is on the account. Additionally, we've highlighted accounts, or the funds for the bond, which shows we have a little bit of rollover that we're holding from the 2008 and 11 issuances due to purchase orders that we're, we're trying to wrap up and make sure that everything is expended fully. And then the 9216 is the June 2016 bond issuance, which is where Berlin High School and those, and the buses are running through.
Question for you.
Yes.
So on the code 9217 Permanent Improvement Levy, is this the 16 Permanent Improvement Levy?
Yes. We started collection in 2017, that's why it says 17, not 16.
Just as a help, if we're working to help people find it, can we throw 16 on that line?
Mm-hmm.
So that people know what that is?
Sure.
Just picky, sorry.
Nope, not a problem. And then finally, the last page of the reports that we discussed was the check register detail. Now, I realize that when we get to the check register detail in the packet, it's multiple pages of every check that actually goes out the door for the district. But what we wanted to, to point out was that on the far right of that, there is a fund coding. So you can see, we highlighted an example of an OO4 Fund, which again correlates back to and creates the detail behind the report on the report by Fund and Special Cost Center to show exactly what those expenditures were. So the information is there and available. It's just educating where it is and how to get to it and how to pull it out. We talked about maybe creating a different report or another item, but quite frankly, those reports are so large at this point, we weren't sure that adding another page to it was extremely helpful, but more so just talking about where those funds are and how they're labeled. So we'll add those descriptors to the January statements. We can maybe go over that again if you'd like more information at that time, just to relate it back. But I think that will help moving forward for the general population to see where it is and what's going on with those expenditures. Are there further?
Making the check register available online, I think is great. I don't think it's necessary, it's to me, it needs to be included in the monthly packet. So if we could reduce the number of pages for us, that level of detail, still being available to the public, if someone finds, that's fine. Frankly, I don't want to spend a lot of time perusing the check register detail.
So maybe have an executive pare-down of that monthly financial packet. Absolutely, we can do that.
Well, sort of related to that, but just, how many checks, how many, how many checks do we send out a month, district? Do you have a number of ballpark?
You know, quite honestly, I have never stopped to count. I can get an average for you, but it's, it's, it's 33 pages? I mean, I don't have a count.
So a couple of questions. Do we, are we, do we pay within 30 days as a district in general for a purchase order? What are our terms?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do we pay 30, 45 days? What do we pay our vendors?
What are our terms?
What are our terms?
Some of it depends on the vendor. Some of the terms may be 30 days, some of them may be, you know, 15 days on our utilities. I can think of a couple of vendors off the top of my head that have a shorter window. But we try to pay within the terms that are expected.
Are we interested, or are there opportunities to pay electronically to save labor and are you taking, I'm assuming you're, you're looking at those and does it make sense? I don't know, I really don't want to be in that part of it, I'm just asking a question.
Sure, there are opportunities to explore that. Some of our vendors are getting to a point where they really just want credit card or electronic-type payments, and so we're looking at what models are available to us at no cost or low cost, because, you know, how, we don't want to take on a new process that costs more than the process that we currently have. So we're, we're working with our banking partners to see what might be available and what we can do at a low, low cost or no cost for the district change. But that will be a, a process that we take on throughout the year. I don't know that it's something that we'll do within the next quarter or so, but definitely within the next six months.
I don't really have that expectation. It's mostly just, as long as you're exploring it, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just as I know personally what is the cost of generating multiple checks for purchases and things like that, that needs labor and all this, and if there's a cost, I'm sure we don't have to per-check this.
Sure.
Give us some relief and more divert that savings into something else that may make sense.
Absolutely.
Comment. I appreciate the reference, just the last section there with the bonds and the PI, et cetera. She brought that forward, as you would imagine, at the last Finance and Audit Committee meeting, and it was well-received. It was an important part of the discussion that evening, so it was really good to see that being brought forward.
Good. I, you know, I think the committee walked away feeling that they had more information and were in a better understanding of not only the planning that goes into it, but how to get the information on a regular basis. So we landed in a really good place. Are there more questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good information.
And tutorial.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mrs. Hatfield, do we have any public participation for general comments this evening?
No, we do not.
Do we have any for action items?
No, we do not.
Okay. That being said, would you please present the treasurer action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasurer action items A through F for approval, please.
May I have a motion?
I'll move. It's somebody, yes.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Rafe, would you please present your superintendent action items?
Yes, I did, I should have probably mentioned this in my superintendent's report, but I'm going to present superintendent action items A through F for approval, but want to highlight accepting the, with regret for the purpose of retirement, the resignation of Doug Wiles, a socialized teacher at Liberty High School, has been with us for 31 years, I believe, so. So presenting superintendent action items A through F for approval.
Any discussion? Take a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
I'll move.
Second. Say, call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. So thank you for attending. We'll be here again Thursday, March 1st at 6:00 p.m.